14th, 2023, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I'd like to invite Pastor J.C. Hawkins from Cornerstone Word of Life Church forward for the invocation.
That's Bowheads. Well, I want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. Lord, I pray for every council member and every family member that is represented in this community, Lord. Bless them in a special way, Lord. I pray, Lord, that as members of the board, Lord, I pray, Lord, that they are good stewards over the authority that you have given them, Lord. Bless them with your wisdom, your hope, your discernment, and knowledge, Lord, for every decision that has to be made. Lord, we pray for your guidance, your wisdom, and your understanding on every discussion, Lord, that is here today. And we thank you for this. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. Please show him in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand in the name of our fathers, and the sons, and the daughters of God.
Roll conflict. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember, Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Do we have a quorum present? Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening? Great. Approval of minutes. We have minutes number 2023-07-WS from July 19th. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have minutes number 2023-14-RG from July 24th. Move to approve. Second. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Epstein.
And the motion passes. We have one item under Presentations and Awards from the Huntsville Madison Foundation Canines for Coping Program. Please come forward. We are very excited to have you here tonight.
Bring the puppy.
Well, this is definitely not about me. This is about her. And Council President Bartlet, I'd like to say thank you to you, to the entire council, to the mayor, for supporting us with this program. This is Joe Taylor. Joe is April's handler, manager, person. This is Stephanie Williams. Stephanie is the manager of the entire Canines for Coping Program for the Huntsville Hospital System. It is an honor for us to be here for you to meet Apple. She has brought, I cannot begin to explain, the joy and the difference she has made to Madison Hospital already, to our patients, to our family members, but to our employees as well. When Apple and Joe go up on the floor, the difference in the whole demeanor of our staff changes. And I think we have fabulous employees all the time, but when Apple is present, they go over the top with just getting to interact with her. And that was our goal when we brought Apple on board. Not only would she be for our patients, but she would be for our employees as well. The last three years has been tough. You all know that with COVID. She's brought a ray of sunshine that I did not realize four legs could quite accomplish, as she has. But she really has, and we could not have done it without you. So we wanted to come by and just say thank you so much. It's quite an honor for us to get to have Apple. And I strategically put Joe's office down the hall from me, so I get to see Apple every single day. And it makes my mornings start off extremely, just extremely well. So, Mayor, you might want a dog.
Yeah, well, I want a dog. There's no question about that.
Any questions for us about Maple, April, Apple, good grief, I can't talk, or what she does? Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is such a blessing for our community.
It truly is. And you know, she sees not only pediatric patients, but she sees a lot of our Alzheimer's patients as well, and it makes a big difference. And I think it makes a difference for their family members to get to have just a little spark of friendliness to come in. Absolutely.
Mary Lynn, if there are members of the community who want to support this program, this is a new program, how would they go about doing that?
They certainly can. We have a Canines for Coping website they can go on. They can go to the Huntsville Hospital Foundation. And that group did not come up to the front, but Sarah and Ashley, where's Sarah? You can certainly go to the Huntsville Hospital Foundation website. We couldn't have done this without Sarah and her staff, because they've really helped. I've been a pest for six years wanting an apple, and I finally got her. And I couldn't have done it without Sarah and her team. So all you got to do is go to the website, and we would love to have you support this program, anyone in the community.
I, yes, I just, can I make one comment while you're doing that? My mom was in Madison Hospital, and my mom is not an animal person. She is not. But she wanted to see Apple. So Apple came into her room, very well-mannered, and just kind of sit there and let the rest of us pet her while my mom watched. And it just brightened her day, even though she's not an animal person. She, it, it really does, it touches people more than you realize it does. And I'm so excited to have her at Madison Hospital.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Can I gavel up?
Can we see Apple up?
Go sit in the chair.
Can we put Apple? Okay, we, we might have a chair.
Yes, it could.
Give her the gavel.
Can you put Apple there? Oh, please.
Oh, there she goes.
Oh, girl. Okay, all right, let's get her.
Oh, you got a bow.
All right. You got it?
Thank you, Apple.
I want a trading card.
We've got cards and buttons for you. Apple has her own business card.
Oh, my goodness. How professional. Apple, fantastic.
That's left, throws right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, best presentation of the year. This is fantastic. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who supports that program.
Can we have a dog at every meeting?
Oh, yeah, that would be nice.
Very calming.
Right here, right in the middle.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're at the portion of the agenda for public comments that are related to the agenda. Each speaker gets three minutes. Please state your name and district. State the agenda item you are speaking to, and save any general comments until the end of the meeting, when it is the appropriate time to do so. The first person that we have signed up for public comments is Bibi Achen.
Is that, is that okay?
Good.
I don't know. Bibi Achen, District Seven. I don't know, I didn't write down everything that, why it is on the agenda, because every single thing on this agenda needs explaining. I have never seen an agenda so bad in my life. But the main one I want to, if I don't finish here, I'll finish later. One of the ones I want to talk about is the one from the Recreation Department about what the agenda said was weather notification. Now, as soon as I saw that, I thought of all the storms that had come through this city. I got caught in one of them. I had finally made it home in time for other ones. But if you've got a, something that will tell, that will notify when we're going to have weather problems, that's unreal, because we need it. But as I read the extended agenda, it's lightning. It notifies you when you've got lightning at the two parks. Now, anybody that's ever lived in Alabama for any length of time, if you've ever gone to a football game or a baseball game and hadn't been caught in rain, you hadn't lived here and been to that many football games. Isn't that right, John? I've been caught in many of them. I don't know why we have to spend $87,000 for something to notify for lightning. There are not that many people at these games, I mean, I mean, in these parks. I'm sure it'd be nice to know, but to me, you can get out in plenty of time. You know when lightning's coming. We've had enough storms here to know. I just don't know, why, I would like to know also, is this system better than an app? I assume it might be. I look at that every morning when I get up. And how far away is the lightning when this equipment notifies somebody? I would like to know how far away it detects lightning. And, okay. And I consider this recreation. You know, the state does not require that the city provide recreation for its citizens. We have from the beginning, didn't have any when I first moved here. Our first director had his office in his back, in the back of his car. And it's grown tremendously, and we consistently spend many, many, much, much money, too much money on recreation. Now, I have some more on the agenda, and I'll hit you up that later, quickly, in two seconds. On your appropriations bill down there, you, we don't need to be nonprofit now. You can, you can approve something that's not nonprofit. You know, can I ask you for money? I guess I can. I'll catch you later in this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Achen. The next person who signed up is Bernadette Mayer.
Okay, good evening. I'm Bernadette Mayer. I live in Heatherwood, District Five. Okay, the first item is looking at the, who signs off on things that look like Jay signed for Roger Bellamy. Is he absent? E. Michelle Dunson, what position does she have? You know, you know, I know that these are kind of internal documents, but they've been made public on the council thing. So, you know, those things need to be kind of described out. Okay, then, finance invoice for barge design from bond account. I'd really like Engineering to describe that project. Okay, then, on Endfinger Roundabout, that, it includes AT&amp;T reinstalling lights. If some of that work is residential development, costs that are normally absorbed by the development, yes, the city needs the roundabout there, and yes, some of the lights were taken out and that kind of thing. But does the city absorb all of Athens' utility charges? Does the city absorb all the streetlights that are going to get put back up? Because honestly, in the development with 242 houses, whatever, and then also the cabling of AT&amp;T, clear delineation of what is done on the main public access outside of the development. Has the city been responsible for all cabling access on the main roads? Replace reasonably what was torn out, but no handout to developer on their normal cost for their 242 lots and homes. Advanced payment to AT&amp;T, I suspect this is for Endfinger and not for the city. Okay, number Point E., 2023-245R, revised policy appropriations for outside agencies. I was at the recent Finance Committee meeting. No discussion there, no real meeting. I understand they just took out a whole bunch of stuff, and it just allows the mayor and the Finance Committee to approve stuff? No. City council is being sidestepped here. Appointed Finance Council is biased. The mayor does not have this power via the council-mayor form of government, and this should not be granted, given away by this city council. Do not change the current policy. Number I, Red Sage software, need IT input. What is the upgrade all about? The Joomla and website, all that stuff. Okay, and then under building, CMS renewal. Okay, need input from IT, engineering, legal departments, some kind of discussion, just not this renewal thing. Okay, I'm going to jump way back to the end on recreation. The Thor Guard Weather Notification System, 86,000. Honestly, Huntsville Hospital with their pool, they check if thunderstorms are in the area, and they can decide when to close the pool. I think the management within recreation can close down Dublin and Palmer Park without...
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and your district.
Margie Daly, Karen Denzine, District Six. Okay, so we had some finance things. SM, N, $26,000, civil engineer for barge designs, plus $20,000. Why so many consultants, yet more and more hiring, and all of my public records requests are denied? We have the right to know. How many employees we have? I want to know why I was refused my freedom of information by Mr. Kilgore, saying it was my idle curiosity? You don't have to answer that. Okay, the Madison branch roundabout Endfinger. We already had two change orders on this, equaling about $100,000. And now it's quoted as the first draw on the bond? Why? Does he then get extra money by not the contingency? He's only allowed so much over the price. 245, changing the policy to give away our tax dollars. They no longer need to be proven that they're a nonprofit. This is just another slush fund for nepotism. Okay, 258, $1,100 for brochures for the police committee from the downtown landscaping budget. I don't get it. SOD, $1,500, $27,000 for holiday decorations. Yet not even an attempt to fix the safe, safety on our street lighting. How many fatalities before you give us safe streetlights again? Then, 266, again rebuilding our website, Red Sage software. I have inquired for freedom of information. I get no answers on what all these, this is an add-on for another $6,000. We have numerous nefarious software, the worst being the solar winds with the Chinese chips. We don't need any more outside marketing just to fleece tax dollars. 248, CMS cell tower consultants. It's an out-of-state firm, three-year contract out of North Carolina, consulted that we're paying for travel. It's absurd. We can't find somebody in the state of Alabama that we don't have to pay out-of-state travel. Then, there was another change order for the barge that's $117,000. And then somebody's doing annexing of more property. They got to be insane to just want to pay more. And sometimes you get the Madison schools, sometimes you don't. Then, 180 resolution vacating more flood pains to build houses. Would, you know, it just creates flooding in our neighborhoods, which you guys are quite aware of what you're doing there. Then the recreation, the weather station, we don't need this. Everybody has an app on their phones, cry out loud, $87,000? Please fix our streetlights. We deserve, and the freedom of information, that's our right in the Constitution.
Thank you, Ms. Damon.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Johnson. I'm in District Four right now on Whisperwood Lane, but I guess that'll be redistricted. I'm in District Four right now on Whisperwood Lane, but I guess it'll be redistricted to Seven if that plan goes through. Anyway, longtime listener, first-time caller, as I say. Uh, yeah, the thing tonight is twenty twenty-three dash two fifty-two R., the eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for the, uh, lightning notification. Um, I've got a, there's a, the, the best app for my weather I've found is this WAFF forty-eight app. And all weekend, uh, the little guy's voice would come up and it'd go, boodoo, lightning detected twelve miles from your location. It knows exactly where I am and it's free and there's not any egregious abs or anything. So, I, I just don't think this is a thing that the city wants to get into is, uh, providing weather information for people who, if they're interested in it, they, they can already get that for free. And also, you might want to think about the liability of this. If something goes wrong with this and there's some kind of weather event that this thing, even if it goes off and works right, uh, uh-oh, the, you might get, city might get sued because they didn't provide enough of a warning or something like that. So, I would just totally stay out of this whole department and just let the private sector handle it. Seems to be like it's doing a pretty good job already. Thank you. Oh, the dog was cute, too.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee reports.
Are you presenting that?
I don't know, am I?
The other members are not here.
I guess I am.
By default.
Okay, um, so.
Finance committee met.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee met and reviewed all of the bills and, um, the updates and we have, um...
Found everything to be in order.
Yes, found everything to be in order. Thank you, I'm sorry. And, um, our Finance Department has reviewed them also. And so with that, I would like to, um, move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion and second. If we need discussion on the items, on the consent agenda.
I do have a question on the sod. Who's going to be maintaining this roundabout? Excuse me, the grass and the sort of thing, once we put in the sod? I'm sorry. Okay, just to repeat, the question is, we've got the, we're going to be putting in sod and then the roundabout. My question is, who's going to be maintaining this? Is it going to be cut? Is it just going to be allowed to grow into weeds? What exactly is happening with this besides just putting down the sod?
Well, I requested it, um, because I don't know if you've been by there lately, but it looks really bad with a whole bunch of weeds. And so, uh, got approval, uh, to find out how much it was going to be and we will be maintaining it just like we do all of our right-of-ways. We're currently maintaining it now in that we're mowing the weeds, now we're putting in some nice sod.
And then we're going to be mowing the sod and that's something.
And then we'll be mowing it, yes ma'am.
We already mow the weeds.
Yeah, we, we, yeah. Weed is already currently being mowed, but now it'll, it'll be much nicer. I don't know if you've been by there lately.
I know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about what we put in there and whether we do flowers or rocks or something like that. And this is the first time I saw that the sod was coming and I just wondered how we were maintaining it.
Oh, okay. I was thinking we had discussed it before.
We discussed it at the last work session. I think you were not able to attend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We had discussed it.
Yeah, it was the best advice by, um, Public Works and Tidewater that we would, um, put in grass rather than any kind of pavers that people would drive over or, you know, I had one resident want to put a bench in the middle there so that they could come and watch the roundabout. And, um, and so sod was the best way to go and we'll do a great job maintaining it just, you know, like the right-of-ways.
Okay, that's another cost. Um, and who has a question about what was going on down in, um, Volch Road? Didn't somebody have a question about that just a second ago?
You talking about Madison Branch? You talking about the roundabout? Draw number one?
I know, I, I wrote on the back and I didn't...
I didn't hear anything.
But somebody had, we had a question earlier. Do you have a question?
Well, I was going to follow up on their question. Um, but that's...
I will, at least to my understanding. I know there was a question about draw number one. That usually means when they ask for their first payment. That is what the draw means. So...
No?
No. But answering your question, draw number one, just like if you've ever had home damage or whatever and you draw from... That was your question. Uh, that came before the council and we voted on them. I mean, that was how those amendments happened. I don't remember when, but that came before us. We deemed them appropriate. We voted for them. They increased the total price, uh, by that and they've now asked for draw number one, which the council just approved. So they'll get their first payment out of that, uh, account.
Also, I wanted to, um, comment on the revised policy for appropriations to outside agencies. What we are doing is we are eliminating the need to supply documents that were not being reviewed in the review process of the applications. And some, um, some budgets do not fall on the same year as like our, our fiscal year. And so that was causing problems for some of the agencies to try and provide that in a different format. And we're still have the same criteria for our, our award. We just are no longer requiring them to produce excess documents that are not being reviewed.
When you say not being reviewed, not needed to accomplish what we need to accomplish, because the process still works the same is, uh, they get it in, they get in the initial budget that comes to the mayor's office. We review it, decide what we will and will not, you know, bring to Finance Committee, who then brings it to council. So the same process is being followed.
Right.
The same distribution is followed, uh, with the exception of we used to wait until no nonprofit could get their money until after the first of the year. Um, we now have changed that and we start working to bring something forth to council, um, fairly quickly after it's approved to get to, to those organizations their money so they can do the things that they've said to support the city more quickly.
Right.
For several of them, we still talk to you guys about who would you like to see who could still come make a presentation. We used to make them make a five-minute presentation or up to five minutes. Sometimes it went longer. Um, just to give you an idea, now that's readily available if anybody needs to see it. But sometimes you guys still want to know what a Madison Chamber or Huntsville Chamber is doing and we'll make sure we get them up for you.
And, um, and like the mayor said, we're still doing the same process. We are just no longer requiring these documents that were not necessary to make the decisions.
There you go.
Any other questions? And then ready for vote. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And motion passes. Presentation and reports, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, two quick things. One, we had a meeting here at four o'clock, which was kind of our second community, uh, probably third community meeting, um, um, with the redistricting. Uh, kind of got the computer up, the boards, you know, a lot of things on the fly, listening to some of the comments, not only from council, but also from the community. Slaughter and Associates is taking that back. Uh, they'll continue to work with Mary Beth. Uh, we're looking to hopefully have the public hearing for what, um, they would present to you guys for initial approval, um, on October ninth, which would give the community time to see that again, to make any additional comments. If everything still looks like it's on track, we would like to go ahead and bring to council, um, for your vote of approval for those districts, um, on the second meeting in October, which will be October twenty-third. Just to give the community an idea, we learned today that basically, once these were approved, we'd have about thirty days, at which point the new districts would become the districts going, uh...
We got new information.
Yeah, we got, uh, that is...
Brian, do you want to...
I was able to confirm that with the statute that this would not, uh, become effective until the next election.
That's written into the... And now all of a sudden, so why do we say it then?
So can I do my, in honor of Saturday football coming up? Not so fast, my friend.
Absolutely. How do we miss that?
Hold that line.
Well, we have the statute and it, and it seems intuitive that that's the way that it would be, but when you continue to read the statute, it does actually specifically state that it does not become effective to the next election. There's also provision that said that, that the plan would become effective immediately if no action was taken. So, it, it didn't make a lot of sense, but, but I was able to clarify once you stepped out and during the meeting, so I apologize for not being able to clarify that.
Oh, the districts will stay the same until twenty twenty-five. However, you'll know what those districts will be, hopefully, October twenty-third. All that. All right. Secondly, next, uh, this Thursday night, uh, at Toyota Field, the Celebrate Madison event that our Madison Chamber puts on to give us the ability as a community to celebrate our city. Uh, I think gates open, if I'm not mistaken, six, I think. And we start the process at seven, the program at seven. I know we have a couple of drum lines there. It ends with fireworks, which is never bad for anything. And we have the opportunity in between to give a quick update on our community and celebrate all the things that we have going. So, this coming Thursday, free event, Toyota Field, six o'clock with fireworks at the end. And that's all I have.
Thank you, District One.
Yes, well, I'd like to, um, just start by expressing my condolences to Councilmember Spears, um, on the loss of her mom and Councilmember Denzine on the loss of her father and just know that my thoughts and prayers, I meant of her husband, excuse me, my thoughts and prayers, um, are with you both.
Thank you.
Um, this Thursday, the concert last week was rained out, so the, we get another chance, uh, to have our last concert in the park, uh, this Thursday. Kelly Joyner will be performing at seven PM, um, at Home Place Park. There's not a bad seat in the house, so, uh, please come out. There'll be food trucks and a lot of fun and the, I'm sorry, not Thursday, did I say Thursday? Friday. It's Friday because we'll all be at Celebrate Madison on Thursday. So Friday at seven PM, please mark your calendar for the last concert in the park series. Weather looks great for both events. Um, high of eighty-three on Thursday, which just sounds wonderful, and weather looks good on Friday as well. So hopefully we'll get that last concert in. And that's all I have.
District Two.
Yes, I want to thank Councilmember Roblesky for, um, pointing this out to me. In the, um, Senior Life Magazine, which is available at Kroger and at the library, they have an article on, from Tarkog. And it is back-to-school tips for grandparents. Tarkog, um, supports our area agencies for, um, aging, meals on wheels, senior centers and several other different, um, um, Senior RX program, several different things like that. And, um, they are very instrumental in helping our community. In fact, um, was it last week? The days are blurring, I'm sorry. Yes, it was last week. Um, Madison City Schools received one of their retired vehicles. Or they're used to ask their, um, their academy over at James Clemens to help students who, um, have difficulty getting to the doctor or to different appointments, they're able to use this vehicle in order to help them. And so, um, that was a very good, um, partnership. Thank you, Mar.
No, I'm going to stop.
I'm having a really hard time with words tonight, y'all. Um, but it's a great partnership between the city and with Tarkog. And it just is a tangible demonstration of Tarkog's commi-, uh, commitment to this North Alabama district. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, District Six.
All right, first I'd like to lead off with the Madison Police Assistant Advisory Committee. They are having their next meeting on August twenty-second. The topic is the, um, school resource officers, officers? Uh, they'll be doing a presentation and be there to answer questions. So it's a perfect time as we get back to the school year, uh, for parents and the kids to come and learn more about how the, uh, officers actually provide such a wonderful benefit to our students. And, um...
Is that the library?
It's at the library. Right. Would you like to say? No, it's, um, six o'clock. Six o'clock on the twenty-second at the library. All right, um, I'm a person one out. Um, as I started this two years ago, it'll be two weeks in October, now my husband was first diagnosed with colon cancer. And throughout this time, I've always shared with everyone in this community because I believe we are a community and a family of what has gone on and the journey that Dave's gone on. And you've celebrated the highs with me and you've, you've been there for the lows. The, uh, the Wednesday after our last city council meeting, we saw the doctor and the doctor put my husband into hospice care. He just, uh, it was time just to enjoy time with family. And that was on Wednesday. Uh, Dave was able to, uh, dress himself and eat breakfast and everything else before he went to that. Uh, eight days later, uh, Dave passed at home with the family in a very peaceful setting. He was very merciful. He had suffered and it was beautiful. Um, but I just want to thank everyone from my heart for all the compassion and all the love and all the caring that was offered to my family during these last two years. Um, and it was beautiful to see the number of people that showed up for the funeral to honor us. We are a family, we are a community, we work together. I know we don't always agree on a lot of things that come before council or that happen in the city. And that's okay because no family agrees on everything. But at the end of the day, we still come together and we do really have a heart in this community. And I just have to thank everyone from my heart for all that you have done. I will be forever grateful for it and I appreciate it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
District Seven.
Um, so I just want to mention, I know, uh, Parks and Rec has basketball. Signups are currently underway. Uh, they do a really good job with that program. So if, uh, folks are interested, please look, look at that out on the website. And, um, I will say, I know Cory's up here a little bit later for Parks and Rec, but, um, having been out at the parks, um, and I do have my phone and have multiple free apps, um, been caught up there many times in no man's land. Uh, and if you've ever seen a few thousand people try to leave a place at one time, it's pretty interesting. Um, so I'd like to hear more about it. I think get some of the questions answered, uh, and the details about it. But, uh, I can tell you, our current condition and relying on people to have free apps when some people don't have cell phones, um, is probably not exactly the greatest thing to do. Uh, but would like to hear more about it when it comes up, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two five six dash R., authorizing the archiving and streaming of the August fourteenth work session that we just had.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second and any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Just have a couple of updates. Uh, on July twenty-sixth, I attended a regional collaboration meeting at the Cook Museum with Launch Twenty Thirty-Five. And at that meeting, our own Mary Beth Boren got a shout-out, uh, from the presenters on the Singleton River Trail, uh, talking about how she's worked with developers to help, um, pay for and develop parts of the trail. And she was held up as an example and I wanted to share that with all of you because, uh, we're very proud of the work that she's done and she's being recognized, um, across the region. On July twenty-seventh, I attended a Korean War veterans luncheon. And on July twenty-seventh, that date is the seventieth anniversary of the Korean armistice signing. So it was a significant date. It was my privilege to attend, uh, and it was a wonderful ceremony. Uh, again, I want to express our condolences to Karen and Connie. It's been a very tough time for two of our council members and we have lifted them up in prayer and we continue to do so. And then tomorrow, no, Wednesday, Main Street Cafe is reopening. I think we're going to have a ruin cutting, um, at ten AM. I think we've moved that. So, congratulations and I'm so excited that Main Street Cafe is going to be back up and running. Um, next, we do not have any board or committee appointments and we will move to public hearings.
Council President, I, I'm sorry, I was going to point out that we had, uh, put an item, a resolution for the, uh, to vote on the archiving of the work session for today if you wanted to take it up tonight.
We, we did that. That was the first thing I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. I'm...
Okay. All right, now, public hearings. And Avon, you want to come forward for resolution number twenty twenty-three two sixty-five R.?
Good evening. The revenue department has one item for a public hearing tonight. Um, we have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two six five. And this is a request from Me So Happy LFC, doing business as Me So Happy. The business has requested an on-premises beer... The business has requested an on-premises beer buying license, relocation, and 104 intercom. Uh, the reason that this business is applying for an on-premises beer and wine license at this time is that it is a new business opening in Madison and everything is in order for this to be considered.
Is there anyone here for the property owner for the hearing? All right, we will open public hearings. Um, anybody from public who wants to speak to this item?
Margie Daly, Karen's district. Um, a while back when we started doing the liquor licenses, I requested that we get some kind of mapping as to where the liquor licenses will be, are in the city. And that when new ones come up, they get added to the mapping. That was six plus months ago and I've never heard, uh, anything about it. So since we're adding more and more, and I know this is Town Madison, which is fine because that's an entertainment district, if I understand.
No, it's not Town Madison, Madison Boulevard.
Uh-huh. So, are we gonna work on that where we could get a map with this, um, with the liquor licenses so that we know? I thought we were gonna separate the liquor licenses and do something so that the liquor licenses aren't near the schools. Uh, is that gonna happen or that was just a false promise?
I don't, that's the first I've heard of it. I've never heard one thing about that.
Oh, it's in the public record. I spoke on it, I, I asked and, uh, is, was it, um, Johnny Blizzard that said he would do it?
Liquor license near a school?
No, 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 that we could map out where our liquor licenses, like, and then we talked about, there's been conversation about that we would not put liquor licenses by schools like we used to have it. I, nobody remembers that? Okay, so, yeah. And then, um, thank you for answering my questions.
Anyone else with public comments for the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearings. And do we have a motion in second?
Uh, move to approve.
Second. Motion in second now, open for discussion.
I just have a question. Did that used to be the Japanese Edo? That's, okay, so that used to be Edo behind, uh, you know, to the south side of Madison Boulevard?
Yeah.
Know what I'm talking about? Okay, all right, very good.
Any other questions? All right, ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you, Avon. Department reports beginning with building.
Good evening. What I've got is resolution 2023-248-R. It's authorizing the renewal of an agreement with CMS, Center for Municipal Solutions, for the technical review of cell tower permitting. And what it is, is no cost to the city, no cost to the city, uh, they review and advise us to issue permits on cell towers or modifications, add antennas to cell towers. And the developer, not developer, but the contractor, uh, they give us a check for the permit and also gives a check for an escrow account. And that money's paid out of the escrow account to CMS and whatever's left over at the end is given back to the contractor, so.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in second, any questions for Dustin?
Dustin, what all goes into that technical review?
They do load analysis, structural analysis of the tower, fall zones, uh, and all that to make sure it's gonna handle the load of the new towers or existing towers on, or antennas.
Is there any, what?
No.
Talking to me or Dustin? Dustin, all right.
Yeah, so it does, it does load analysis, structural analysis of the, uh, the towers.
Yeah.
Make sure it's out of the fall zone of any, any, uh, structure. And it, uh, any new and existing antennas that's added to that tower, it takes a load of that.
All right. I know a while back when, uh, Megan was here in her previous capacity, we had a discussion, I think, about the new five G, XG, whatever the number is now.
Small cells?
Yeah, small, this has nothing to do with that, okay, all right.
Those are, those are just something like typical utility poles, you know, it's nothing, it's a hundred and fifty feet tall.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you, Dustin. Court.
Um, legal was asked to prepare ordinance number 2023-261. This is the first reading. Basically, the legislature added a few new offenses and, uh, so the municipal court needs to update their fines to reflect those. Uh, one of which was a new offense involving smoking in a car with a minor. And another one was selling, um, synthetic marijuana to minors. So that's what we're doing here is just simply including in our new schedule fines, those new fines that were just passed by the legislature.
And it's just the first reading?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Engineering.
All right. Okay, first I have resolution number 2023-236-R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with a G-Tech in an amount not to exceed, not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for a geotechnical engineering study, um, for Spitzer Green Sabreto, uh, evaluation to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes, next.
Okay, next I have resolution number 2023-247-R. This is authorizing the purchase of a property for the Browns Ferry Road Culvert project in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars to be paid to the Heritage Station Homeowners Association.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion or questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And motion passes, next.
All right, next is resolution number 2023-255-R, uh, authorizing an amendment to the professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions for construction, engineering, and inspection services on the Wall Triana Highway, uh, Graphics Drive, I-565, uh, project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, any questions, discussion? Seeing none, ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, finally, I have resolution number 2023-270-R. This is to award the bid for project number 2023-006-ITB Downtown Ditch Drainage Improvement, uh, to Grayson Carter and Son Contracting in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you, Michael. Human Resources.
Good evening. I have two items for your consideration this evening. The first one is resolution 2023-262-R to authorize changes to the city's job classification plan. The request in this resolution is to increase the grades of pay for police records clerks to take them from a grade six to a grade seven. And also to increase the grades of pay for police dispatchers and move them from a grade eight to a grade nine.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in second, any questions?
I just wanted to thank Megan and her staff for this. These are very hard positions to fill and we appreciate the support for our employees.
Thank you, we really think it will make a difference.
Good deal.
Okay, ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is resolution 2023-263-R. This resolution authorizes a professional services agreement with Evergreen Solutions LLC in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to conduct a classification and compensation study for the city of Madison. And the purpose of the study is to evaluate rates of pay for all city employees, compare them to the market, and propose adjustments to the pay scale. If approved tonight, we will, we will begin the study immediately and we expect to have numbers for you all and our city financial advisors to review around the holidays.
Move to approve.
Second. Any questions?
No, I'd just like to say that I, I really appreciate that you're doing this. Um, I think it really will help the retention and finding employees across all of City Hall. I really appreciate this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Legal.
I have a proposed ordinance number 2023-240. Uh, this is the, uh, second reading of this authorizing Madison Utilities Request is, oh, the point zero zero, sorry, point zero 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 seven acres of property on Wall Triana that are no longer being utilized by any. Uh, basically, they are looking to us to authorize it, um, and that'd be the substance.
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion or questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes. Planning.
The first item for you is ordinance number 2023-241. This is just a first reading, um, and the, the second item on the agenda is also related to this. Uh, we have a request to annex in a single-family house. Um, and the, um, next item is the, um, setting the public hearing, um, to zone the property R1A upon annexation. This did go to the planning commission and they are supporting it. Uh, the, uh, public hearing would be set for September 25th of this year in the second item that's before you. So you don't need to take action on the annexation ordinance, but you do need to approve the resolution to set the public hearing.
Make a motion to set the public hearing?
Second. Motion in second. Ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The third item is proposed ordinance number 2023-180. This is, uh, a first reading. Uh, there is a project that was approved. Um, the area that is, um, highlighted in purple, uh, was located in the floodplain. Uh, the developer had the intention of filling that and bringing it out of the floodplain, which they go through FEMA for that approval. Um, in the interim, um, according to our ordinance, that area in purple was put into a floodplain easement, uh, so that the project could move forward and the developer could build out the area that's not in the floodplain. The developer has subsequently filled in the property, gotten a LOMAR F, a letter of map provision based on fills from FEMA. And so now it is appropriate to take the floodplain easement off. And that's what this action is doing. And so, uh, again, this is a first reading and, and we'll be back at your next meeting asking for approval of this. All of the, um, engineering and all the entities have signed off on this easement being removed. The second item is proposed ordinance, or the fourth, uh, proposed ordinance, number 2023-246. Uh, this is for vacation of, uh, utility and drainage easement in the rear yard at a Heritage Hills lot. This is also first reading. The homeowners are looking to do some improvements in their backyard and so they're requesting to vacate, um, this portion of the easement in their backyard. And again, we are all supporting, all of the entities, utilities, and so forth are supporting this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Police.
Good evening, here for, uh, resolution number 2023-244-R. Uh, we'd like to contract with a company known as Sterry Cycle for monthly shredding. Um, so we have, uh, a lot of records that are on a strict retention schedule, both by state and federal law, that we have to shred constantly. And as of right now, it leads to hours and hours of unproductive time of employees just sitting around shredding with the tiny shredders we have here. So, um, what this company does, they come out with a truck with an industrial-sized shredder and can do in twenty minutes what it takes us hours to do. And the only thing we have to do is ensure that one of our employees is there to witness the shredding and then they'll take all the paper away and, and burn it and, and dump it.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in second, any questions?
Chief, would we be able to coordinate this with city clerk if they were to have things that needed to be shredded also as a time-saving piece? Or there's a bunch of stuff down there that we may be able to look at that might save us a bunch of time downstairs?
We currently have a company that we've been using for a while.
We've got one that we use, how much do we pay for that?
We pay, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars for six canisters whenever we call them to come.
So this is an hourly rate?
It's a monthly rate.
It's a monthly rate.
Right.
So whatever we do, that's what they're gonna charge us.
Right.
So can we coordinate those?
We could, if you like.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Like a hundred and thirty, better than two hundred and something, whatever, okay. Let's look at it, it's great, that helps.
You mean, I'll call them every month? We don't call them unless we're ready to shred according to, um, state law. But usually we have six canisters, which are the same size as your garbage cans at your home. So whenever we get those six filled for our destruction period, then we call them. Well, they empty the shred up in our office. We have a small office-sized one and they will, they're gonna do that one also.
It sounds like this is kind of a one-time shot of getting rid of a whole bunch of stuff.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we'll coordinate.
There you go, report back.
Ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Chief. Recreation.
Good evening. I have resolution 2023-252-R approving Thor Guard Weather Notification System for Dublin and Palmer Parks in the amount of eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. So let me start telling you about how we clear fields and pools and all that, so everybody knows from the beginning how we got to this point. So we have a thirty-minute rule. So we got an app on our phone, you know, by the way, there are million lightning apps. And trust me, every citizen that gets upset when we close the pool or close a field has a different app than what we got. The airport has a different lightning notifications than what we have. So when I ever talk to a citizen, I'm like, my app trumps your app, no matter what. It's just, this is the way we do that because we're not gonna compromise safety. So we wait thirty minutes after the last lightning strike or, or sound of thunder to redo, jump back in the pool, to get back on the field and play, or whatever we do. So yes, you know, we, we have three recades that were at Palmer Park, just for an example, last, last weekend. Had a storm come out of nowhere, had thirty people trapped at the lower quad because it takes three recades to run to each field, stop each activity, and clear the field. So by then, storm hits, got lightning, got kids on fields. That's one of the issues that we have on a regular basis. And when I saw the price of this, when I was asked to look into it by our different organizations, I was like, oh, no, we, there's no, no way. I'd rather spend eighty-seven thousand on other things. But, um, we had Fourth of July, twenty twenty-two, had a bunch of firemen, police. I'm on my phone looking at the weather, checking, make sure it's safe. Out of nowhere, bolt of thunder. I got two thousand people on a field that I'm trying to get into Dublin to take cover because there's a storm coming. Um, it was mentioned that this is for lightning only. This is not lightning, this is weather. So tornadoes, um, and other weather events and lightning, of course. And it also can notify everybody in case of an active shooter, for example, or a lost child, or other notifications that would trigger the sound to go off. And, and, you know, we can make announcements that way. Um, one of the other issues, one of the other features of this is it's site-specific. So I'm not getting weather from the airport, I'm not getting weather from another station in Madison, or it'll be right at that park. So when we say it's ten miles, a So when we say it's 10 miles away, it's literally going to be 10 miles from that park, not 10 miles from the airport. The mayor can tell you, I think this is the biggest complaint he gets about rec is when we have to close facilities. A lot of times the sun's out, and a storm is bearing down on us. And, well, why'd you close the field when the sun's out and it's shining? Well, we have a storm. I gotta get thousands of people out of Dublin and Palmer Park. It's just not one baseball field. It's several fields. It's several people in a pool. It's a swim meet. It's, you know, a lot of, a lot of events that we have, a 4th of July, an Easter egg hunt, where it's not just a few people there, it's a few thousand people there.
How will the alert, I know, why don't you go ahead and get?
Let's get a motion in a second. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Spears, go ahead.
So how, so from an alert system, how would citizens be alerted? Does the park have any ability?
It will have a speaker in the park just as, like, you got a tornado siren, it'll have a siren that will notify when it's unsafe and it will have the fields cleared a lot sooner than somebody running around going, you need to clear the field. And, oh, by the way, umpires and everybody's going to argue with us because my app didn't say it had a lightning strike come in, or there's not a, it says this storm's 10 miles out. Well, this would give us more clarity on that.
So is there an app and a siren?
There's an app that'll be on staff's phone, and then there'll be a siren that's triggered automatically. Takes the decision-making out of our hands 100%.
Okay.
So this staff will be trained in when they hear the siren, clear the field?
Yes, and we'll have that as posted everywhere. And the siren's going to be a lot more effective than a 16-year-old recade that we had out there this weekend arguing with a 40-year-old man of, you need to get off the field. In fact, I got an email about it this morning of teams refusing to leave when staff told them.
We still have coaching meetings on the front end of baseball, softball, basketball. So one of the other things we do is we have parent, and the parent and coaching meetings, which at this point, we would tell them the process of what to expect and what we need them to be able to follow from a safety standpoint.
Correct.
So on the front end, everybody'll know how the system works and what to expect. And when they hear that, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And if nothing else, go back to, even if you can't get everybody out of the, out of the park, you can get them to their cars.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the key, is to get them to where they need to be from a safety standpoint.
And the other feature, it can tell you when it's all clear. We gotta wait a half hour. John, you've been out there. We're a half hour behind at a 6 o'clock game, and it's all clear 30 minutes later, we're 30 minutes behind. Plus the game runs over, we're getting kids to bed at 10 o'clock at night. Down to school night. I understand it's expensive, and I'm a taxpayer too. And when I first saw the cost of this, I was like, is there another system? There's other systems that just do lightning, and it's all reactive, nothing predictive, nothing, you know, that, that wouldn't be an app on our phone that, that we would, you know, have to notify people. This can, you know, we live in an age where an active shooter is not out of the realm of possibility anymore.
Well, I guess let's also clarify, this is not just one incident. You got Dublin and Palmer. So this is two locations, right? So, I mean, even by my math, that's 86 divided by two. For two locations. And then you got multiple fields at those locations in which you're protected. And anybody that's been out at Palmer, you've been all the way in the back, or Dublin, you've been all the way up at the top. It's not exactly a hop, skip, and a jump to get out when there is weather. And you can get caught very easily.
Last, the last storm we had, the fences came down at the, at Wesco, so I have fence repair. That could have been people on the field, and fortunately, we were lucky enough to get them off the field.
How many sirens will there be then, Corey?
Well, I think Palmer, Palmer has two, I believe, and then Dublin has one.
Okay.
Um, we, and the other thing, if I live next to Palmer Park, is this thing going to go off at 3:00 in the morning and wake me up? We can set it to when the parks open and close.
And maybe future expansion to the community center, Sunshine Oaks, too.
And Hexagon.
And Hexagon.
Yeah.
Another good point.
I mean.
It's a step in the right direction, and it's all about safety.
It's not an everyday need, but man, when we have, you know, 4th of July, and that bolt of lightning comes down and hits a tree right in front of me, it scared me. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I was trying to get, and trying to get 2,000 people when the sky opens up to listen and where to go is almost impossible.
Seems like it's been every day lately. Lot of storms.
Yeah, we've had a lot of storms.
Okay. So it sounds like you did a lot of investigation. Why did you pick Thor Guard?
Yeah, because they're predictive instead of reactive. Every other one would be, okay, there's a lightning strike 10 miles away. This one can predict the lightning strike's going to be coming. Or tornado could pop up, the barometric pressure that reads, all that kind of stuff. It's, it's, it's predictive instead of reactive. I mean, the reactive stuff is on your phone, though. Lightning strikes already happened by the time it popped up on your phone. And, you know, I get people that say, well, that lightning's 15 miles away. Well, if you can hear it and see it, it's, it's a threat.
Well, I mean, just this past weekend in Florence, there was a death by a lightning strike.
Yep.
We can't afford for it to be one of our children.
I watched the news tonight about the light. I mean, their sirens didn't go off and notify those people. And I'm not saying it's, it's going to be the, you know, people are going to be people, and they only can listen to us so much, I don't carry a badge. But when they hear a siren over my 15-year-old, 16-year-old recade, they're going to listen to the siren instead of the recade.
Okay, ready for vote? Just one other question. This is a yearly amount, or is it a one-time?
Oh, it's a one-time. The only, we did, we did some reference checks. The only expense is if the, it has a backup battery. So if it's hardwired and the battery goes out, they have to come out and change the battery. But I think that happens every, seven years after.
All right, that's all. Ready for vote? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Duzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next.
My next item's Resolution 2023-253-R approving the purchase of materials for the air-supported structure for the outdoor pool at Dublin from Horizon Building Systems in the amount of $15,250. When the mayor came in 2016, we put up the air structure over the outdoor pool to give more water time to the swim teams. When we purchased that, you know, we told them, maybe taking it up and down every year. One of the things that Horizon told us when we bought that was, you're going to have to replace the emergency doors because they're, you know, just from the magic of putting something up and taking it down, it just wears out over time. And that's, there's some other little tools in there and little pieces, but the main bulk of that cost is the emergent fire emergency doors.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Duzine? Motion passes. Thank you, Corey. Okay, now we're at portion of the agenda for public comments. Each member of the public's limited to three minutes for speaker. Please come forward and state your name and your district when you speak, and we have one card turned in from Bernard, the mayor.
There was enough left over from the first part of the meeting to talk about because I didn't have time to write up the rest on the card. Okay, I appreciate the rec details on, on that, but they're on, in that particular quote, there is an annual upgrade thing on there, you know, you'll end up seeing on the sheet because I reviewed those pre-meeting. So there is more, there is a cost, an annual cost for it. But, okay, with Palmer, with two sirens, and then with the Dublin, one siren, I think the thing is that when the siren goes off and those staff members are not respected for people getting off the field, I think they should be able to have a policy to call the police non-emergency and get the police out there to help them. Because honestly, it's safety, and if people aren't respecting the workers, you know, that needs to, you know, that, that needs to be spelled out. So I think a policy and procedure thing with this also needs to be detailed. And then if those, if they, if this is protective system and it works well, once the third location does get developed enough to where we would really need it, because it's not really needed now, I don't think. I mean, you know, once those parks, you know, parks, whatever. So I'm all about safety and all that kind of thing. So I'm glad he, he did the research on this, and I hope this does work out well. But it does need to have some follow-up with, because I, I, I really, that's very disrespectful for people. I don't care if it's a 16-member, 16-year-old staff member. They're following the park's guidelines and things, and they're speaking for the city. So I, I do think that some of these building charges and some of these things, I don't know, you know, it's lined up under finance, and I'm not really sure, you know, how things are really closely getting scrutinized on some of the building and the development things. Now that the, there was an explanation on those easement, you know, the flooding, the flooding, the floodplain and those, the floodplain easement, utility and drainage easement. Now, I, I understand a little bit more about those from the explanation, but I do think that we do need to be very careful about how, how things are planned for the city. And I do also do think that liquor licenses should be mapped out, and we should know where those are so that when somebody comes up and they want to put one in, well, you know, again, is it, is it great to have it near a school or whatever? And I think there's some more things that can be done on planning. And the finance stuff coming up for the approvals and what's going to be passed for next year's budget, I don't know, there's not, just not a lot of time given, I don't think.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, you're out of time. Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to address the council? Please come forward.
Well, never, but sorry. My, my, my kids have gone to.
Could you state your name and the district you live in?
My name's Greg Fields. I don't know which district I'm in, I'm sorry.
You got a neighborhood?
Uh, Dirt Road.
Okay.
Okay. So my, I've been in, my kids have been in Madison Elementary for about five years. I've appreciated the school. I've appreciated what they've done. But my son came home with his book. And this book, my son came to me and said, there's a poem in here that said, "Blood of Children on the Walls." And he looked at me and said, is this appropriate data? So I looked at it, and this is, let me just read some excerpts. Byron burns in his, in his, in his restroom, in his house. He likes playing with fire. His mother grabs him by the neck and drags him down the stairs. This is in the book for eight-year-olds. Mom, are you really going to, mommy, are you really going to burn you? She wasn't, she wasn't even going to take him to the hospital. She was going to set him on fire, then patch him up at home. Please don't do that to him. I've always wondered what, I've always wondered what part of him he'd burn. She'd burn his face. Maybe it's just to scare him and set his clothes on fire while he was in them. I knew mama was going for skin. Please, mama, don't burn him too bad, okay? Please, please, Joey was starting up again. Don't worry, sweetheart, I won't. I'm just going to burn his fingers so he won't be tempted by fire again. Fingers! Did he say he was going to burn someone's fingers? She sat on his chest. This is mama. Not this time, buster, you're going to pay. The match was getting closer and closer, but, but I knew Byron would feel the heat. So, so close now, I could, I could hear the sweat on his finger getting, getting turned into steam and making a piss sound. That's called steam. Unbelievable. Okay, so let's talk about Byron, the boy in the, the boy in the book. Boy one's style of death language was to just yell real loud and slap the side of Larry's head after each word. Lemme quack. See quack. Them quack. Gloves quack. Young quack. Fool quack. Whack-a-whack. This is eighth grade. My, my son's eight years old. This is fourth grade. Okay, so maybe the dad, maybe the dad is doing something good here. The dad picked up his toothbrush. Uh, hold on. Dad, lemme, why do you always hide your toothbrush? Dad picked up his toothbrush and said, look at this. Not only is it an instrument perfect for brushing your teeth, it also has wonderful uses, too. And the greatest thing, you can rinse it afterwards, and no one can tell you what it's, what it's used for. I know that the best toothbrush for cleaning is always someone else's. I caught Byron using my toothbrush for cleaning quarters in the dog's mouth. Okay, so in here, I'm running out of time.
Mr. Fields, you are out of time. The three minutes are up.
Mr. Fields, have you spoken with the school board and the superintendent? Have you spoken with the school board and the superintendent?
Was it in the library or in the teacher's classroom? What's the name of it?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fields. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name.
This is BB Ice in District 7. I noticed you were worried about shredding, the shredding expense. I would like to say, in the agenda today, you have approved way too much money for Enfinger. Enfinger is great at taking advantage of things, and he certainly has. He spent $1,500 on sod for a roundabout. I couldn't, I begged for sod for a cemetery when my husband died. Could not get it. I had to buy it myself. Finally, the city finally put some on there. And here you're worried about the looks of a roundabout. You don't even put it on the cemetery lots. Also, you're spending $27,000 for winter decorations. Downtown. My God. You know, everybody in my subdivision, if they went downtown, there wouldn't be enough spaces for them to park. I can't go because it's so crowded down there. But also, this $27,000, I can't even get a, you all to even think about putting a fence around the cemetery. When we have all these wonderful storms we have every day, it, it, a lot of the trash that's over there in the Shantytown Division gets thrown over into the cemetery. I have taken some off of my husband's grave that has blown over there from there because there is no fence. They put one on the western side, but didn't put one anywhere else. I don't trust them to put it on the right line anyway. Trying to get that line, where I know where the line is between the cemetery property and the Shantytown property. But also, I don't know how far, he didn't say how far away this lightning thing will tell you. He mentioned lightning and other things that have to weather also. I want to know how far away it will detect. 10 miles, was that what he said? That would be great to, that would be great to know that if everybody in the, in the city would know that, not just the people sitting at a, you know, I've got, as I said, I was caught in one. I had to pull off in Crowe because it came down so fast. But anyway, you're spending too much money on recreation, and a lot of this money that, you know, you can spend elsewhere. I, I guess that's all. Just pay attention to what you're spending because you're spending my money.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Carrington District. Okay, about this lightning rod or whatever you guys want to spend $87,000 on, I don't know if this is obsolete. I couldn't figure out if it was an app. Is it an apparatus that goes on top of a pole? You're talking about sirens. These are going to be blaring in our neighborhoods all, every, all the time. There's lightning 10 miles out. I'm right by the park. I'm going to hear this thing go off all the time. I think it's a waste of money on that, okay? I really wanted to also thank Councilman Seaford and Mayor for answering the questions that I asked. It's good to have a rapport rather than just ignore our questions. And tonight I saw that there was an attempt to answer it. So my question on the Enfinger thing is, okay, it said the first draw. We've already done two change orders for this thing, over $100,000. We've already done two change orders for this thing, over $100,000. That was my question. So, why didn't those two change orders come out of the original first draw instead of doing change orders prior to the first draw? And then, it's like, whatever it is, 5% to 10% done over the, you know, the amount we gave, and, you know, that's all they get, contingent or whatever. So, does that $100,000 we've already given count in that, or doesn't it since this is the first draw? That's my whole question on that. Then, you know, there's a problem with the First Amendment. This is our Constitution. Everyone's sitting up there looking out on this Constitution. I feel like my First Amendment and 14th Amendment are continuously being broken by this council. I have freedom of speech in the First and equal rights in the 14th. I am not getting any freedom of information requests. I'm being denied for idle curiosity. It's not, I have a passion for this city. I love this city, and I like to know how it works. I'd like to know why we have so many employees, new employees, new positions, and yet we have departments that all they do is hire consultants. We're paying consultant here, consultant there. I mean, I'm glad to see the geotrak, the, whatever it is. I don't know if they're doing the ground-penetrating radar to check for these streams now, but I, I was happy to see that on the agenda tonight, that we're finally going to start looking into that. But is it really necessary to spend all that money like that? And I, I totally, you know, I just want my freedom of information, so I'm entitled to that by the Constitution of the United States. You refused five. None of those are idle curiosity. I spend my time, I spend my weekend going over these agendas. I look into almost everything. I think that it is awful disheartening that you have the nerve to tell me that it's only idle curiosity.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name and your district. Seeing none, we will close public comments.